And welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Lisa Cole. I am the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's joint hearing for the proposed issuance of air permit number 305-008-X001 and X002 and the proposed issuance of National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Number AL-008-4482 for Pillar Materials LLC's discharges of treated drainage from a dry preparation sandstone quarry located in 226 Chihaw State Park Drive, Anniston, Alabama 36207. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the draft permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department will consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments, and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On November 29th, 2023, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit applications, preliminary determinations, and draft permits have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public, and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summary of such statements may be presented orally. Each speaker will have five minutes to present their testimony. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in factors it can consider when making permit decisions and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to ADEM by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in a question-and-answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit actions. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing tonight. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit actions and develop responses to comments for the draft permits. The hearing record, final permit determinations, and responses to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's air division; then, a representative of the department's water division; then, a representative of the department -- I mean, I'm sorry -- a representative of Pillar Materials LLC; then, any elected officials or their representatives who have registered to speak prior to the start of the hearing this evening. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they are registered on-site at this hearing. I now recognize Ms. Pam Hunt to present a statement on behalf of the department's air
Good evening. I am Pam Hunt, Chief of the Construction Materials Section, which regulates permitting, compliance -- Let me swap to that microphone. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good evening. I am Pam Hunt, Chief of the Construction Materials Section, which regulates permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for quarries for the air division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. In addition to me, the department's air division is represented by Mr. Doug Carr, Chief of the Energy Branch, Ms. Delala Simpson, Environmental Scientist, and Ms. Emily Williams, Environmental Scientist. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. Pillar Materials LLC has applied for an air permit for a facility that involves the crushing, screening, and conveying of limestone. These processes contain equipment that would be subject to federal new source performance standards. These regulations were developed by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and are uniformly applicable across the country. The department administers these regulations in Alabama. These regulations limit emissions of dust from crushers, screenings, conveyor transfer points. Dust from these processes would be controlled by wet suppression systems. The wet suppression systems would be capable of meeting or exceeding all federal and state requirements found under the regulations. In addition, wet suppression -- I'm sorry. In addition, wet suppression systems would be used to minimize dust generated from vehicle traffic within the site. Any dust generated from the facility's operation would be in quantities that would define the facility as a minor source under the state and federal air pollution permitting programs. Based upon our review of the air permit applications for this facility, the department has proposed the issuance of an air permit developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements. While the department understands that there are concerns surrounding the siting of a facility such as this, including traffic, noise, property values, and others, the department does not exercise zoning authority and may consider only comments relating to air quality in its final decision on this request for an air discharge permit. ADEM's authority regarding quarrying operations and other mining operations is limited. The department does not have the authority to regulate other aspects of the mining activity, including blasting. Blasting is regulated by the state fire marshal. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Pillar Materials LLC with the conditions of the proposed air permit would not result in violations of applicable air quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed.
I now recognize Ms. Angie Boatwright to represent a statement on behalf of the department's water division.
Good evening. Can you all hear me? No? Is this better? Good evening. My name is Angie Boatwright, and I am a Senior Environmental Engineering Specialist in the Mining and Natural Resource Section of the Stormwater Management Branch in the Water Division of the Department of Environmental Management. The Mining and Natural Resource Section carries out the permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for the discharge of treated effluent from mining facilities within the state of Alabama. The department's water division is also represented this evening by James Carlson, Chief of the Stormwater Management Branch, William McLemmons, Chief of the Mining and Natural Resource Section, and Skylar Wilson, an Environmental Engineering Specialist in the Mining and Natural Resource Section. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Water Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's water pollution control and water quality regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal water pollution control regulations. The Draft National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or MPDES, permit issuance proposes authorization for discharges of treated effluent from the crushed rock quarry and associated regulated activities through three proposed outfalls to waters of the state of Alabama identified as Chocolaca Creek and Jackson Creek. Chocolaca Creek is classified as being suitable for public water supply and fish and wildlife. Jackson Creek is classified as being suitable for fish and wildlife. Based upon the review of the MPDES permit issuance application for this facility, the department has proposed to issue the MPDES permit, which was developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements, which are designed to be protective of water quality. ADEM does not exercise zoning authority and may only consider comments relating to water quality in its final permitting decision. Similarly, ADEM understands other legitimate concerns may be held by the public, including truck traffic, property values, aesthetics, proximity to residents, noise, and blasting. ADEM's authority regarding mining operations is limited to the regulation of the discharges of effluent to waters of the state. The department does not have the authority to regulate mining activity itself or these other important topics. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Pillar Materials LLC with the terms and conditions of the proposed MPDES permit will not result in violations of applicable state water quality standards which are designed to protect human health and the environment. The preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed.
I now recognize Mr. Lance Taylor to represent a statement on behalf of Pillar Materials.
Everyone hear me okay? Be the loud red.
You gotta be close to it. Really, I think you gotta be right up on it.
What about now, is that better? Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank ADEM for being here tonight. I'd also like to thank the city of Oxford for letting us use the Pacific Center tonight for this hearing. Hello, my name is Lance Taylor. My wife and I are the owners of Pillar Materials. We were both born and raised in Cleveland County, and our families live in Cleveland and County Councils. I am a civil engineering graduate from the University of Alabama, and I have worked in construction my whole life. In 2008, I purchased my general contracting business from my father. Taylor Corporation has operated with an excellent reputation for 54 years. I take pride that 90% of our customers are repeat customers who ask us to bid on projects based on the integrity and hard work of our employees. We have built many civil site projects in the area such as Honda, Chocolaca Park, Taldega Super Speedway additions, and the Sider Ridge subdivision. In addition, we have performed many environmental projects, building and upgrading wastewater treatment plants for Anniston Waterworks and Seward Board, the city of Jacksonville, and companies such as Cook Foods and Tyson Foods. As these plants discharge treated wastewater into their closest watersheds, ranging from the Cohaba, Cusa, Talapusa, and the Tennessee Rivers, to even Chocolaca Creek, no one understands better than me that the quality of treated water needs to be monitored and maintained to high degree. In addition to wastewater projects, we have also performed numerous environmental remediation projects for various chemical companies in the area, mainly PCB cleanup. My vision for opening and operating a quarry comes particularly from the dramatic aggregate price increases in our area over the past 12 years. Aggregate prices in the U.S. have increased around 47% on average during that time period. But in this area, lack of competition has fueled a price increase of over 250%. I care that this not only affects general contractors like me, but also concrete, asphalt prices, farmers, our cities, counties, our state DOT, and consequently, everyone in this room. I have worked on the quarry permits with a group of qualified engineers for over a year, and these permits meet or exceed all ADEM's requirements. ADEM has reviewed and amended the draft permits, and Pillar Materials will uphold every requirement listed in each permit. I strive to always do the right thing, but one thing I always do is keep my word. I know it's difficult to put blind faith in someone you do not know, but I can assure you that I will be a good neighbor, and Pillar Materials will be a benefit to this community. Thank you.
We will now proceed to the receipt of public comments from elected officials. First, I recognize Mr. Danny Shears, County Commissioner.
When I first heard about this quarry, being a businessperson, I probably -- I thought initially it would be a good thing because I am very aware of the prices of rock and gravel. As a county official, a lot of our budget goes to gravel and rock, roadside work for our highway department, and I know that a local company has the monopoly on it, so to speak. But the more I dug into this and the more people reached out to me and gave me information as a representative of the people beside me and behind me from Calhoun County, I just felt my stance changed. I felt like that due to the things I heard on the water quality, the air quality, blasting, noise, I just felt like the overwhelming majority of the people that I represent were against the quarry. So therefore tonight, my stance would be against it. However, according to you all's opening statements, it sounds like everything has been approved up to this point. So I really don't know, as a public forum, what we can do, what difference it will make. I do want to pause and thank Senator Keith Kelly, who I saw here earlier tonight, for helping to set up this meeting for people to have a voice, and that's one good thing we have in this country, is we do have a voice. And I would ask that the Alabama Department of Environmental Management consider the voice of the many people here tonight, that although we need quarries, we need rock, we need gravel, we need cement, concrete, sometimes things are just not in the right place that they need to be, considering how close it is to several houses. So as an honor to be representative of the county of Calhoun County, I would ask you to consider not issuing the permit to Pillar LLC, but I understand the state pretty well. If everything is in line, they're gonna do that. I would just ask you to consider the voice of the people. Thank you very much.
Next, I would like to recognize Belinda Kilgore of the Sider Ridge HOA.
Hi, I am Belinda Kilgore. I am a member and a board member of the HOA of Sider Ridge, and I'd like to thank you tonight for being here and listening to our voices. And I'm also a wife of a general contractor, and I understand the prices of supplies for people to build homes, businesses, but I also understand these are the homes and the lives of our neighbors. And I know there's two gentlemen in this room tonight that Mr. Taylor had mentioned that this was not about money to him. Well, it is about money to all of us in this room because our homes are our biggest investment, and that is something in with Sider Ridge, Sunny Eve area, we have families from young families with young children to, you know, families that 80-year-old, couples that live in our area, and this is their home, and they take pride in their home. And I just, you know, of course, we are against the quarry, and then also, you know, we're worried about the PCBs. That's very -- everybody's aware here in Calhoun County, and they're dominant right now, but when you start shaking this earth that God has created, it's gonna stir up, and it's gonna stir up more than the PCBs. And so, but anyway, I would like to say thank you for being here, and please consider not allowing this quarry to happen. Thank you.
We will now proceed to receive a comments from members of the public. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a five-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in the record. Our first speaker will be Kristi Harden, representing Harriet Holstein.
Can you hear me now?
It might be better if you hold the microphone closer to the mic.
Okay. Sorry about that. Not a problem. Thank you for being here. My name is Kristi Harden. I'm representing myself tonight, but first, my first time slot is to represent Dr. Harry Holstein, Professor Emeritus of Archaeology at Jacksonville State University. I would like to read in part a letter that Dr. Holstein submitted to me just last week on January the 19th. To whom it may concern, the following letter expresses my deep concerns that the proposed Oxford quarry, and I'm shortening that because this is the Oxford 431 quarry, will negatively impact significant cultural resources and archaeological sites within the project area. My name is Harry Holstein, and I'm an Emeritus Professor of Anthropology at Jacksonville State University. At JSU, I was the Director of the Archaeological Resource Laboratory, which conducted hundreds of Cultural Resource Section 106 projects throughout Alabama from 1979 through 2011. As part of a Fort McClellan Federal Archaeology Contract with the U.S. Corps of Engineers, Mobile District, in 1982, I proposed an archaeological site prediction location model of low, medium, and high probability site locations for Fort McClellan's Fellom Range that resulted in the immediate adoption by the Corps and subsequently utilized by other U.S. federal archaeologists agencies. Based upon this common sense site predictive model and my 40-plus years of CRM archaeological experience in locating archaeological sites in Alabama, I can say with confidence the construction of the quarry project will cause significant negative impact to numerous valuable prehistoric Native American cultural resources. For instance, based upon my predictive model, one should expect to find that along the floodplain of Chocolaca and Jackson Creeks in the northeast corner of the project area on landforms such as terraces, natural rises, and high probability locations for substantial multi-component Native American village sites and/or campsites, every permanent Native American village site that I have investigated always contain human remains, which will present additional Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act human burial issues to the proposed quarry site. Another cultural resource which I assure you will be located with high probability within the project area are Native American sacred stone structure sites. This assumption is based on my nearly 40 years of experience of investigating these ubiquitous Alabama and North American, Native American stone structure sites. Stone mounds, stone walls, stone prayer seats, animal effigies, and other stone architectural monuments are an integral part of the Native American Creek, Cherokee, and most if not all, Native American cultures. In 2007, the federally recognized United South and Eastern Tribes passed the Sacred Sacramental Stone Landscape Resolution, which specifically recognized the cultural importance need for protection of these sacred stone structure sites. I have visited, investigated, and officially documented hundreds of these sites with the Alabama State Site Files. In fact, I have visited and recorded several sacred Native American stone structure sites on properties immediately adjacent to the project area on Chocolaca Mountain and nearby Signal Mountain behind the Sam's Club. In 2009, a large stone mountain JSU recorded was destroyed, leading to community protest, multiple legal and Native American cultural issues, and Native American sacred stone structures will most likely be found along the slopes and ridge tops within the actual quarry location and should be avoided at all costs. I just hope ADEM will consider the negative impact this project will cause to one of the most beautiful, biologically diverse, and archaeologically sensitive areas of northeast Alabama. If I can give other assistance to you on the matter, please feel free to contact me. And Dr. Holstein issues his personal contact information for you, unless -- That's all I have for Dr. Holstein, but I do have my own speaking time. Do you want me to proceed?
You can proceed.
Thank you. So my name is Kristi Harden. I'm a resident of Sider Ridge in Oxford, and I live nearby the quarry area. Through Google Earth Resources, we have established using Viewshed tool, major negative impact, and the beauty of the area will be destroyed. Generational homes in the Sunny Eve community will have a front row seat to the blighted remains of what was once a lovely ridge of potential historical significance. The application for the permit states there is no provision for reclamation of the disturbed areas. This is located on page 7 of 19, taken from the application. I've attached the Viewshed rendering of how visible the operation will be from various areas around the Sunny Eve community, and that will be within my packet I turn in. The applicant also stated on page 6 of 19 that the operation will not be located in Indian or historically significant lands. We have found no record that a survey has been undertaken to determine this, and would ask how does the applicant know this? It is established through USGS to the graphic resources that there are many questionable sites of historical significance on the proposed quarry property which should be reviewed. Please see attached gray shade map of aerial selected potential sites. Each circle on that map indicates an anomaly in the topography, which would merit a closer look to determine if in fact these are religious significance to indigenous peoples who were here before us. It's also established via the prior survey of the Chocolaca Creek Davis Farm Project in the preface to the report, which was submitted March of 2023, that it's reasonable to assume that the area to be surveyed extends well beyond what has been completed. Due to the fact, and this is a quote, "Due to the fact that data from other sites in the region is still lacking, the data recovered from the Davis Farm Project may provide a strong chronological framework for further definition of cultural phases in the future." The map is attached that will show the Alabama Indigenous Mound Trail, which goes right through basically the quarry property. I request that ADEM require an Alabama Historical Commission based on survey prior to the consideration of the quarry application or allowing any excavation to begin on the proposed quarry property. As Dr. Holstein stated to me, and I quote, "Please let anyone know, I can say there will be significant sites of proportions of this property that most likely will contain Native American human remains." That alone should bring into play the Native American Repatriation Act. One last note is that we did note in the application that Mr. Taylor had asked for 24/7, 365-day operations. He has stated to my husband and to others he does not plan to operate that way. We would submit that the application needs to be changed to reflect what he's actually telling the public. Thank you again for this time, and I would like to submit this entire report, even the parts that I did not read. Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize Jake Matthews. And just to get everybody to this, I'll go ahead and let Rick Harden know that he will be after Mr. Matthews.
Rick, where's Rick? Come on, Rick.
Come on, Rick, you know I'm gonna let him go before me.
And I'm sorry, I should have given this instructions to the prior speaker. Please step to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest organization that you represent.
Okay, you're speaking to me or Mr. Matthews?
To you.
Okay. My name is Rick Harden. I live in the Sider Ridge community. Thank you for allowing us some time. As my wife expressed a moment ago, there seems to be some discrepancies between what Mr. Taylor has told us and what is in the application, such as he plans to operate the quarry eight hours a day, five days a week. The permit is requesting 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Mr. Taylor made it clear that they would be building a very substantial road throughout the quarry for the trucks to haul materials in and out, and that this road will be concrete that will help control the dust and the environment. The application applies for a gravel road or dirt road. Those in dry days can create a lot of dust and dirt. Crushing and blasting. I've been around quarries where I've heard the crushers run and they're very loud. The Sunny Eve community will be very noisy, in my opinion. And I do not know how much the effect of the blasting will be. Mr. Taylor tells me that the blasting will hardly be felt, that the blasting company or contractor that he will use is very careful about controlling that. That's fine. But Mr. Taylor has formed two different corporations. He is an owner of the company that will own the property and assets, a second corporation that will actually operate the quarry. So he's created layers of buffers to protect himself from liability. I suggest to Mr. Taylor, or if you could do this in your application, to require Mr. Taylor to put his own assets, expose them in a way that should someone be harmed, they have some remedy, someone to sue and collect. As it stands right now, it appears that if someone's harmed, they have no one to go to. It appears that the road that will be the entrance to the quarry is going through a wetland, in my opinion. It looks like a wetland. Even in the driest days, it seems to be holding water. I call that a wetland. I don't know if he'll harm that wetland, or is he going to turn that area into holding pond number three? There are three holding ponds, or outflow ponds, one, two, and three. Pond number two seems to be, in my opinion, within the city limits of Oxford. I don't know if Oxford's been approached about rezoning that as commercial or industrial or however that is done. Let's see, I got another minute. Oh, thank you. Folks, they plan to discharge 500,000 gallons of water per day. Now, if I read the application right, and it's confusing to me, that 500 gallons may come from the holding ponds where they take the water out of the ponds, wash the gravel, wet down everything, and then recharge, discharge the water back into the ponds. Well, eventually that water's going to disappear, or the, hopefully raining watershed will keep the ponds full. But if it's dry like it has been, I expect that they're going to need water from somewhere. I do not see anywhere where they plan to take it out of the creek, but I think that's That covers all my things. I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate y'all coming tonight.
After Mr. Matthews speaks, Trevor Mann will be next. Mr. Matthews, would you please step to the microphone and clearly state your name and the organization you represent?
My name is Jake Matthews, and I am an adjoining landowner, and I'm also an attorney. A couple of comments, but I want to just present some photographs for your review. May I approach? One of the things that Mr. Harden referenced was the appearance that the entrance which they're talking about is on to 431, which is the exit that people will take to go to Cheha. That looks like a wetland. You see the sign I put that in that's on the interstate. This is the entrance to Cheha for folks going up there. The state's fixing to spend over $20 million in approving Cheha. This is another factor that we understand what y'all have said. However, when you read the code and read what this desired result, it says that you guys are supposed to be controlling the man of environmental properties and assure for all citizens of the state a safe, beautiful, and productive environment. Having reviewed the applications, not just the air and also the water applications, there are a great number of deficiencies, at least in my opinion. First of all, the application is in the name of the organization that does not own all of the land. It only has a small portion. Back to the quote, the problem that Mr. Harden has just outlined. Additionally, the other aspect of it is, is part of it, there's no question, we have a response from Oxford that it is part of where they're going to actually have the quarry will be in the police jurisdiction, the city limits of Oxford. But they say, well, they won't get to that till 20 years later. Well, who's going to be there to check? But the problem is, is you cannot tell exactly where. This is a deficiency in the application. You cannot tell, looking at that application, until you actually go out there. Now, you'll notice another photograph. That is the one right there. That's the entrance where they're proposing, but you can see it looks like a wetland. I've been living there for over 38 years. I continuously see water there all the time outside the boundaries of the creek. The picture that you also have there is another picture that is actually taken from the mountain where they're going to bring this down. And as you can see, it is going to impact all of the folks there in Sunny Eve. You will also note, you can see a water tower there which is across the interstate. If you also drive on the interstate, you will also notice a lot of gravel, not gravel, big rocks. That's where a sinkhole was. So one of the concerns is evidence there have been sinkholes, not just there, but also in Sunny Eve. So there are other areas that we think you ought to consider along those lines. Having reviewed the air permit, I could see very little information about how the dust is going to be controlled. I worked in a quarry when I was a young man in high school in Solocaga. I know what dust and what the problems in a quarry will be. There will be dust, and it will be needed to be controlled. The exit, there's nothing that talks about keeping the dust in the trucks when they haul it down the road. There's issues that I think that the problem is monitoring. I understand there's limited resources, but there's absolutely, in my mind, no monitoring to even start to check with what he is saying. And of course, the other issues are all what you have said, but I appreciate we have several elected officials. But just right now, how many people are here or against this quarry? Would you please say it?
Sir?
Say it. No, I just want everyone to say it.
Sir. Your comments are supposed to address the panel, sir. Thank you.
All right. Well, the only person in this room that can change this is the applicant. And I just wanted him to see that how many people this impacts. I'm not wanting to fight, but we are all here together because we don't think this is a good reason, a good plan. The deficiencies that are just among many, we'll hear more from the Cusa River Keepers. But I appreciate the fact that the elected officials are here. But elected officials also need to know that the notice thing, that's not adequate notice, in my opinion. Adjoining landowners need to be notified. And it also should contain an input by all elected officials. That's a change, and I would hope all of our elected officials that are here will take that to heart because it doesn't appear to me and to those of us that have researched this that we have really much of a say if all of this is a foregone conclusion. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Trevor Mann. And behind him, Joseph Jones.
Hi, my name is Trevor Mann. My wife and I run a small, successful farm in Bestmore, Alabama. This past year, we bought land off of Highway 431 in hopes to expand our farmer operation and employ local people. We bought it because of the proximity to the natural beauty of Cheha and Dahladega National Forest. And if I had known about the quarry, we would have probably looked elsewhere. You know, companies like Pillar Materials come in, strip the natural resources of an area, and leave ecological destruction in their wake. Mr. Taylor proposed ideas like lakes or botanical gardens to close out the project. This seems like a lot of greenwashing to me, if I've ever heard it. I prefer to preserve the natural beauty of our state.
After Mr. Jones will be Ronnie Norden.
Yeah, my name's Joseph Jones. I bought some property off of...
Sir, if you can either hold the microphone or get very close to me.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, my name's Joseph Jones, and I purchased some property last year off of County Road 431. A beautiful place. But after learning about this, you know, quarry, then I was somewhat bothered. I contacted a friend who represents over 800 clients that was around Lakeshore Quarry. It's going to take 15 years for him to try all of their cases. Some of the cases have been tried, and they've reached some settlements. It's my understanding that quarry is no longer open. So we have the opportunity here to stop this damage, health damage, environmental damage before it gets started. So I certainly hope that this is just maybe one small step in being able to stop something that's going to impact the community, in the area, in the health of people that live here. Thank you.
Next, we have Ronnie Norden, and just after him, Justin Overton.
My name is Ronnie Norden, and I live in Sunny Eve, and my wife and children are part of the fourth generation. I am representing anyone who opposes the quarry. I am opposed to the quarry for two reasons: the risk to our health and the risk to our homes. As a health professional, I can tell you there are serious risks to our bodies, especially our lungs. When you open OSHA's website, you read breathing in very small, respirable crystalline silica particles causes multiple diseases, including silicosis, an incredible lung disease that leads to disability and death. Respirable crystalline silica also causes lung cancer, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, and kidney disease. Exposure to respirable crystalline silica is related to the development of autoimmune disorders and cardiovascular impairment. These diseases are life-altering and debilitating disorders. Annually, thousands of people across the United States are affected. You may not be able to see it, but you're certainly breathing it. Respirable crystalline silica, also known as RCS, is categorized and monitored as PM 2.5, fine particulate matter 2.5 micrometers or smaller, and PM 10, 10 micrometers or smaller. Both sizes are inhaled and can go directly to the lungs and bloodstream. Quarry blasting, crushing, and hauling operations emit high levels of this carcinogenic particulate matter. Visible dust is also created by front-end loaders, transfer conveyors, excavators, bulldozers, and utility vehicles. I know that wet suppression is in place, but no process is perfect. And particulate matter will escape. Particulate matter containing RCS is easily carried in wind currents and can remain airborne for long periods of time. Particulate matter 10, or PM 10, can be carried up to 30 miles, while PM 2.5 can be carried hundreds of miles from the source. These greater distances can affect homes in our city, our county, and even beyond. We have homes that are a stone's throw away from the proposed quarry, as well as hundreds of homes that are a mile or less from the quarry, and my home falls in that category. According to the EPA, there is no evidence of a safe level of exposure or threshold below which no adverse health effects may occur. The closer you are to the source, the exposure will be higher and the risk will be greater. Other factors that are included winds and the weather conditions. I know most of us remember our drought this past year, and we're still in a drought, with many areas going with little to no rain for 60 days or more. Do you remember how dusty it was? How ponds and other water sources dried up? With the heat, wind, and no rain, this could cause much more particulate matter containing RCS to easily be widespread throughout our area. The dangers of RCS silica relieves us with a lot of questions. How many air quality monitors will there be near the quarry site or even onsite? Who will monitor RCS in our communities of Sunny Eve, Sider Ridge, and our city of Oxford? Who will monitor the air quality on our land, in our yard, and inside our houses? I'm sure I know the answer to that question, and that is no one. No one will be there to monitor how much respirable crystalline silica we're breathing. When this carcinogenic dust blows past the fence line of the quarry property, then I'm sure it's not their responsibility anymore. They will do nothing about it, and there will be no recourse for the citizens of Oxford. Most of the research I've read shows quarries have a bad reputation with poor self-monitoring and breaking multiple rules and regulations on a frequent basis. If you don't believe me, do a little research and you'll find it's true. I respectfully ask that you not approve this permit. The body of evidence confirming the negative effects of a quarry on our land, water, air, and our homes has already been proven by the large number of quarries that have been built, causing multiple problems near homes in our state of Alabama, as well as quarries throughout our country. Thank you for coming to Oxford, and I'd like to thank our county commissioner for standing up today, Danny Shears, for us here in Oxford and our county.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Could you please state your name and that organization you represent?
Sure. Justin Overton with Cusa Riverkeeper. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. As I mentioned, my name is Justin Overton. I'm the Executive Director and Staff Riverkeeper at Cusa Riverkeeper. Cusa Riverkeeper is a citizen-led river conservation nonprofit that works to protect the Cusa River and its tributaries in Alabama, including Chocolaco Creek and Jackson Creek. I'm here tonight representing not only the interest of our organization, our 3,400 members, but also the many people standing behind me that have a lot at stake. So many people are unaware of proposed facilities in their communities because AIDM's not using its full potential to alert the public of issuing permits in communities. This is not a capacity issue for the department. This is a communication issue that could be built with trust of the public. We understand the department feels that the notification is adequate now, but to many of the people in this room and our organization, it is simply the bare minimum. For instance, we received a forwarded email from a quarry opponent notifying us that AIDM would be extending the original deadline. The irony is, is that I... The irony is, is that I received this information from AIDM in the List 90 at 5:13 PM on the day the original deadline was. We still submitted comments that day as an organization to prove a point. AIDM's public notification fails the people of Alabama, and its weak enforcement fails to protect our waterways. With the public outcry surrounding this proposed quarry and the extended deadline, Cusa Riverkeeper sought counsel and advice from technical experts and waterkeepers throughout the nation who advocate for more stringent permits that are protective of waterways, not the permit holder. Cusa Riverkeeper does not believe AIDM should grant this permit. AIDM should reconsider its boilerplate permit language, because there's nothing substantial in this permit that considers the possible adverse consequences of the effluent discharge of this quarry and how those consequences could be avoided to meet the department's mission to assure that all citizens of the state have a safe, healthful, and productive environment. Here are some of our thoughts, as well as our technical experts' thoughts on the proposed permit. Although the permit is over 200 pages, it's incredibly generic. It contains no relevant material or specific detail to the creek's under-consideration or the quarry. There are no limitations on flow rates at any of the outfalls, including the Tier 2 Creek, Jackson Creek. There's no discussion on the logic of directing the greatest effluent discharge of over 300,000 gallons per day to the smallest surrounding waterway. There's no mention of the expected rate of groundwater inflow, and that rate is not used to calculate the daily discharge. There's no requirement for the permit holder to do anything but report...